To the June 9th Seabrook School Board meeting. I'll take a roll call up, actually I'll do the checklist here. As Chair of the Seabrook School Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Seabrook School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923, and webinar ID 95966894499, or by clicking on the following website address, as listed on the agenda. B. Provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. The instructions have also been provided on the website at the SU21 office at www.su21.org. C. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103. That is Rhonda, email at r-evans@saU21.org. Adjouring the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event of the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting should be done by roll call vote. To start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, when each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Please take your roll call, Rhonda.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
Jessica Brown? Jessica? Just make sure you guys unmute yourself.
Okay. I'm alone at the time, but somebody should be home at some point.
Okay. Forrest Carter?
Jennifer Hubbard?
Here with family in the room.
And Kelly Huber. Mike, I have the roll call taken.
Thank you, and we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone have a flag?
Oh, wait.
Oh.
Just wait.
Here we go. Hold on, just.
Oh, wait.
Darn, it's not. Okay, here we go.
Are you all set?
All right.
Uh oh. Oh, great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Excellent work, Rhonda.
Has some public notice on that when I saw about George Floyd. Okay. Do we want to start the acceptance of gift, of a gift?
It's the public hearing. You got to open up.
All right, open the public hearing on the acceptance of a gift. I'm sorry.
And the gift, and maybe we'll ask Stephanie to say a word about this. The gift is from the Children's Literacy Foundation, abbreviated as CLIF, which is valued at approximately $25,000. Stephanie, would you like to give a brief overview of this particular gift?
Sure. So we applied for this grant, and based on our creative plan that we provided and our needs, especially for socioeconomic needs, our community qualified for the grant. And we don't receive actually any direct funds. It's all paid for through the Children's Literacy Foundation. So again, it's called CLIF. SAS has actually had a similar grant from them in the past as well. So our community has benefited from this before. And basically, we have different options that we can do through the organization where we'll have, it might look a little bit different this year, but we've already had meetings about some creative ways to utilize these funds, whether we're remote or in person. But we can have guest authors and illustrators come. We can do a writer's workshop. We plan on doing a family literacy night. And all students will have at least 10 books that will go home with them to keep, and there's other events associated. And it's nice, we have a partnership with other schools. They only do this funding for schools in New Hampshire and Vermont, and all the authors and illustrators are from New Hampshire and Vermont. So it's nice that it's a local connection and builds those nice connections for us. So we're looking forward to this opportunity. It's called the Year of the Book Grant, and it will be for this entire school year.
That's great. That's just great. We have to, I need a motion to accept the grant or not?
I'll make the.
This is the public hearing. We have a motion later on in the agenda.
Sorry. I'd say.
You're taking any public comment?
Yep. Okay, next is public comment on agenda items.
Mike, you need to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. I will close the public hearing on the acceptance of gift. All right, now the public comment on agenda items. Seeing, let's see.
We'll just thank Jen Thomas was the one who helped orchestrate the grant and did some of the writing and organizing for us. She's our literacy person and oversees our Title I grant as well. So a big thank you to Jen Thomas for that.
All right. I see and hear no one from the public. So we'll move on to approval
You muted yourself, Mike.
There we go. Okay, wrong button. I'm sorry. I'm clicking left and right here. Okay, approval of the June, of the May 12th, 2020 School Board Public Hearing Meeting Minutes. Any comments? Hearing none, seeing any? None. I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion that we approved the minutes.
All right, Jen makes a motion. I need a second, please.
I think I have to abstain because I wasn't there, but I can second it, correct?
Yes.
Second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for May 12th, 2020. Please take a vote, Rhonda.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
You muted.
I abstain.
Thank you.
And Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded, Mike.
Thank you very much. On to the finance report. Matt?
Good evening. So we have included the expenditure and revenue year-to-date reports. There have not been any significant changes from last month. However, just to reiterate, you know, the estimate from last month, we do plan to end the year on a positive from a fiscal standpoint. Initially, we had thought we would need to withdraw from our special education expendable trust due to, you know, unbudgeted expenses in excess of $400,000. However, we have recognized savings. So we will be ending the year with a positive balance, and we will be able to fund our expendable trusts that were passed at ballot this past March. That being said, after we fund those trusts, there'll be, there'll be very little that will be returned to the town. Be happy to answer any questions in regard to specific
I happen to notice that your special, the special ed is over considerably. Has that changed from last month?
Not demonstrably. We, I mean, we've been in that $400,000 range.
Okay.
For the last three months, there haven't been really any significant changes to student need or services. Where we've saved is in other areas due to the remote learning environment. So that's, that's helped. You know, as I outlined, specific accounts at last month's meeting that included, you know, heating fuel, electricity, extracurricular stipends, some supplies accounts, substitute teachers. So many of those accounts that were, that we did recognize savings due to working remotely. And as you, however, you do know that there were some additional costs due to going to remote, and that included technology costs. So however, we did recognize more savings than costs.
Now, on the revenue end, are we basically at the end of collecting anything at this point for this past year?
So let me, we will still be receiving some revenue. Let's see what we have. So, you know, as you can see, we still, we still have about $2 million that will be collected from local, you know, from the town of Seabrook.
Right.
And other than that, we, we might see some more Medicaid funds.
Okay.
It won't be a ton. But other than that, we're pretty much where we'll, we'll be ending. So we'll, we'll have a surplus of revenue when we're done, you know, in the, you know, $60,000 range or more. So that, that was another element that I think I had mentioned at the last meeting that did help us for year end.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments?
I'm sorry. And you know what? I'd be, I do want to mention, I'm fairly certain that we, we don't actually need $2 million from the town. It, it just hasn't been posted on this report. So that number is likely, I'm, I'd have to verify, but I'm almost certain that that number is significantly smaller. It's probably more than $1 million range. It just, this report was, was, was created just prior to when we received, we received monthly checks from the town. We have no concern that we're going to receive those funds. We will absolutely receive them. So I just want to clarify that. There was, make sure no one was worried. You hear $2 million, and I mean, I wasn't concerned, but you know, thinking about it, I just want to make sure everyone else was aware that that's, that's not a non-issue. So.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Administrative update on the Return to School Task Force.
So I'll, I'll handle this tonight. Other members of the team can answer questions, and then I'd like to turn it over to your principals for updates on, on the end of the year. So the part I want to make sure I go over with you is that we continue to meet with the Return to School Task Force, and the working groups continue to meet. We had a meeting yesterday. There are some important dates coming up. The first is that we will have a joint board briefing on, on where we are. We don't expect to provide, you know, firm answers on, on much of this, but, but it's more a discussion of where we are and that with the joint board, and that will be next Monday, the 15th, at 5:00. That's a public meeting. We are holding a similar briefing for our employees, which is an employee-only, if you will, meeting where people need an SAU or Winnicottan email address in order to access that meeting, because we want people to be able to speak freely and ask their questions. And that's going to be on Tuesday at 11:00 a.m. And then that evening, I believe 6:00 p.m., we're, on the 16th, we're going to do a community forum, and we're doing that together with SAU 90. So it'll be one community forum for the two SAUs, because we've worked very closely together on these plans. And then we're going to bring the task force back together on Thursday morning to talk about what we heard out of those sessions. So it's a very, very busy week and a half here on, on this work. I just want to share with you that one of the, one of the major discussions over the last week or two has been around some ideas or recommendations, that's not too, if that's not too strong of a word, of items that are not scenario-dependent, meaning they are things that we really need to be looking at, whether we are remote or whether we're back in school. They are not dependent on any one of the scenarios. And I just want to lay out a few of those for you tonight to sort of pique your interest in coming next Monday to talk about these in more detail. So here are some of those, some of those items we've been discussing, and they've been discussing in the working groups. So one is around our wireless infrastructure. You know, the, that committee's recommended that we go to a 1 gig connection minimum, and more important than that, that we have upload and download speeds that are identical. That is not often the case. That is not always the case in buildings or schools, but, but it is particularly important, particularly if we're going to push out content out of our schools to students, say remotely from a school building. One other thing that that group has talked about is making sure that we have a similar toolbox across all of our K-8 schools, meaning that teachers, students have access to the, to the same tools that we can better support, and a process set up to add to that toolbox. There, there have been some recommendations around making sure that we have a schedule in place if we have to pivot to remote, that we actually have a schedule in place upfront so that we don't have to reinvent all of that and/or even invent a schedule at some buildings which haven't had a specific schedule for, for courses and teaching, that we have measurement systems, grading and reporting systems all in place. One other one that we have policies and procedures regarding people coming to school, or quite frankly, I should say not coming to school when sick. We recognize in these discussions that many of our systems, as a society and as a school district, actually incent people to come to school and/or to send their kids to school when they're sick. So we've had conversations about parents who need to go to work and who, you know, send kids to school with a fever or whatever, and how do we work with people to make sure that we, in as much as we have control, can change some of those incentives, because those are things that we can't have happen in this, in this new world. We're also looking to survey families around their interest in utilizing transportation services. We're surveying parents around whether they will send their kids back to school, given certain protocols being in place. We're surveying employees to see if they will return to school, given certain protocols being in place. We know that a neighboring district of ours, Oyster River, has done a survey and found that about 20% of their parents are indicating that they're concerned about sending their kids back to school, that about 20% of their employees are concerned about coming back to school, and about 10% of their kids, they surveyed kids' grades 5 through 12, about 10% of their kids are concerned about coming back to school. And so what do those numbers look like and what do they mean for, for us? One that we know we're working on now is around calendar. So we believe that whether we're back in school face-to-face or whether we're in some remote situation, that we're going to have to look at our calendar and try to figure out a way to do two things. First, to push more professional development time to the beginning of the year, so that teachers have time to prepare for whatever this is going to be that we encounter when we come, when we come back in August. And second of all, that we take a look at whether we can achieve more professional development time throughout the year if we go to a calendar that relies on 990 hours instead of one that relies on 180 days. We believe that creates more time for professional development within the teacher calendar of 187 days. And so we're going to mock up a calendar to discuss with, with the boards around what that would look like, because we think we have to be flexible in terms of what we can do in the fall. So those are just a couple of the, sort of the highlights of, you know, that are not necessarily scenario-dependent that we've been talking about. This is a, this is a great group. I think Mike can attest to that. Aaron also sits on, on that group in addition to the other members of the senior staff that are here. It's a great committee. The working groups are doing really fabulous work. I, I will speak for myself and say that every Monday afternoon when we finish, I'm exhausted by, by the conversation. I'm exhausted by the work that's been put in by these different groups and by the daunting task that is so obviously ahead of us. So if you have questions, we're happy to try to, to answer them, and if not, I'll turn this over to Aaron and Stephanie, and more to come on Return to School next Monday at that joint board meeting.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Absolutely.
Who's, who's on first, Aaron or Stephanie? All right, go for it.
Okay, so we've been busy. We had a, just a great graduation last night. We provided, I think I said this in the last month's meeting, but we did a car parade for the eighth graders. We had staff there, and each family was able to come in their car. The families were able to all get out and stand in front of our Seabrook Middle School sign for a picture. We had someone taking pictures for the families, so we'll be able to email them the picture. And then all of our eighth graders were able to take a bag with them full of gifts. The team, the eighth grade team, as well as administrative team, really worked hard to put together some nice gifts for the eighth graders in lieu of their Washington DC trip. So they got a sweatshirt, they got a Winnicottan t-shirt and a lanyard for Winnicottan. We actually have one student going to private school next year. Mrs. Fagan went and got a t-shirt for that private school for her, so she didn't have a Winnicottan t-shirt. Just the whole team, I can't say enough, spent a lot of time really thinking of some really nice thoughtful gifts for the students, and so far we've heard some nice things from them. So it was nice for them to have that chance to celebrate. Some of them decorated their cars. They even, they got dressed up and really looked great and happy. So we were pleased with how that turned out. We also had a Zoom component for some of our staff who either weren't able to or didn't feel comfortable being there, were able to join via Zoom and, and see it all happen as well. So a big thank you to all of the staff that helped make that happen, our teachers for being there and administrators for being there, but also the tech staff who helped make Zoom happen, and facility staff who helped us set up. Our SRO was there also, just to make sure things went well. So it went very smoothly, and we were very happy with that. Today, we had a, not to steal Stephanie's thunder, see, when you go first, you get to say these things first. Sorry, Stephanie. We did a reverse parade. Probably you've seen those where students and families got to drive through, drive by both the middle school and elementary school in their cars, and staff were out there waving, and, and again, people decorated cars and they made signs. Lots of, I saw lots of fourth grade signs. That was really great. But just honking and kids waving, and the staff were so excited to see the families, and the, and the kids looked really happy, too. So that was a nice way to kind of end our year today. We've had staff back over the last couple of days just wrapping things up in their classrooms and making sure the classrooms are ready for the summer work that will get done in the building. And so it's been kind of an exhausting few days for everyone. I don't know, Mike, were you planning on talking about retirees? I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, I think that you should talk about retirees, but we still have that on, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Is that on the agenda?
It is, but you can do it now. It's a separate item, but you're more than welcome to do it now.
Okay. Well, I'm at it. I'll, I'll go for it. I have three in particular that are, that are middle school only. So Stephanie, I'll allow you to do our shared staff. I don't want to be too piggy. But three who all told, put in 99 years of education, two of whom are 35 years in our building and one's who's 20 in our building. So I will start with Tricia Valsich, who is seventh grade science and 35 years at Seabrook Middle School. And it's hard to be able to just say enough about that much dedication to one school district and one school building and really going to be missed. We did do, before I forget, a retirement parade in lieu of our, the retirement party that had been set up at a, at a venue. We did a parade by one of the retirees' houses where all three were, live in the same town. They were all at that same location, and staff were able to decorate cars and drive by and lots of honking. And he lives on kind of, in a cold, in a circle in a neighborhood, so it was, it lent itself well. And we had escorts from Hampton Police, which was awesome. So a big thank you to them. So we've been working hard to try to celebrate them. So that's Tricia. Tom Schwedheimer, who's PE, 35 years in Seabrook also. And again, the dedication, it blows me away just to think about it. We've had multiple opportunities to kind of talk about them, and it just, it's unbelievable and hard to imagine someone who puts that much time into their career in one place. It's, it's not common to see that, but we can't, I can't say enough about that either. And then our third is Pat Beach, sixth grade science, who is 20 years in, at Seabrook Middle School. And even though that's not, wasn't her whole career, was most of her career, and still 20 years in one place is pretty amazing. So we are so appreciative. I was able to give them their bowls from the school board. They were very appreciative of that. We did that at the end of the parade today. So thank you for that. And, and yeah, we're just, we're thrilled for them and excited for them on their next adventure, and they certainly deserve their retirement. We're saddened that they had to go out this way and unfortunately missed a chunk of the year without seeing students, and that's been hard. But they've been troopers and, and amazing, and, and I think they're ready for some relaxation. So we really appreciate all of their hard work, and we look forward to hearing about their next adventures. That's the middle school. That's where we're at. We're all, the teachers are certainly ready for a break and have worked hard and, and learned a lot and ready for a little bit of a break and then some planning for next fall for whatever that might look like.
Aaron? I'd like to thank you and all your staff for thinking out of the box and putting these reverse parades and everything else together. I realize that many people are doing other schools, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of planning, and we all appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Stephanie?
All right. So we've had a lot of things wrapping up the year. Teachers have done a great job trying to celebrate and, you know, have a final meeting with the students at the classroom level and some doing some grade level, and it's been really nice. One teacher even came in. She had the students tune in the day after instruction. Last Friday, she came in to clean out her room, and she did a little story hour from the room in kindergarten, which was really nice. So there were just moments like that where there was, you know, teachers taking the extra steps to just make things a little special. When we handed out the bags of student stuff the other day, you know, there are little bubble wands and different things stuck in by the teachers, because they're usually giving them beach pails and things like that at the end of the year. So definitely staff, to no surprise to me, going above and beyond as usual. So it's been great. As Aaron mentioned, we had the reverse parade, and it was really fun. And especially for our retiree is Robin Kazaza, our school counselor. And so it was great to be able to have her final day be everybody pre-K through eighth grade that she has had drive-through, and we had a sign and, you know, markers that she was there, and people were honking, "Happy retirement." And so it was a nice moment for her. And again, like Aaron said, at the end of the parade, we had people socially gather and gave her her bowl. And she was very appreciative of that, and we have some other gifts that we've prepared for her. So it was really great. She has been in our school for 19-plus years, and she started out as like the in-school suspension room person and went back to school and did all sorts of things and became the school counselor. And she has, you know, multiple generations of families that she has worked with. She, we don't know what we're going to do without her. We've got a great person to take over from her, which Robin knows from committee work that she's been on. So she's excited about her, Janine Richards, for taking her position and feels confidence in her. So she's excited about her um, Janine Richards for taking her position and feels confidence in her leadership. But Robin will be truly missed in terms of her connections with the families and the knowledge of the families and the, and the empathy for situations. Um, she has been really fantastic and a great resource for the, for the teachers. Uh, we also have uh, Anna Williams, who is retiring and she's been with the school district, working with both mine and Aaron's school for eight years. Um, and she is going to be retiring and going to life on her farm that she has and doing things there. Uh, but she's had a, you know, quite a stint, eight years here as the special ed director and um, having full confidence. And Jessica Parsons taking over from her and they've been collaborating uh, to make that transition. And um, Aaron and Caroline and I have been working with them as well. So we wish them both uh, the best. And with Robin, we didn't have to do a reverse parade to her house because she's right down the street. So we said, we can parade by you anytime we want. And uh, Anna, where she doesn't have us, big a connection with um, all the students and we just uh, kept it on the down low. She wanted to have something a little more quiet. Uh, but this remote learning experience has been really wonderful. Um, our staff has risen to the challenge. Our parents have risen to the challenge. We've had, we've taken the time to seize opportunities. So for instance, I think I mentioned before, we don't usually have a lot of time to meet with our EAs and our, our teachers. And so we had weekly uh, team meetings and we were able to meet with, say, all the kindergarten teachers and the EAs and the specialists and everybody who worked with kindergarten and preschool together. And we did that weekly with each team. So that was really great to be able to do that and um, it was a lot of meetings. I feel like we're all screened out. Um, but it was really great to be able to collaborate and we've gathered a lot of different ideas um, for what the fall could look like in different scenarios. So we've had a lot of discussions and input from teachers. The task force work has been great. So we're looking forward to plugging along and moving forward. Um, we're going to do one more final distribution of student materials Thursday night. Uh, Aaron and I are going to try to get out the final materials for families that couldn't make it during the days previous. We're going to do something a little bit later after work hours and try to get that final push of stuff out. So thank you guys for your support. Uh, the staff really appreciated the letter from the school board um, earlier during this pandemic. So um, thank you. That meant a lot to people.
Great. Thank you. Anything else at this point, administration? Um, moving on to acceptance of the gift from the Cliff Grant. I'll entertain a motion to accept the estimated value twenty five thousand uh, in the form of supplies, books, and author business and presentations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And I need a second, please.
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to accept the Cliff donation grant. Rhonda, would you please take a roll call? You're muted.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Great.
I have the vote recorded, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll keep you posted as to the events that are associated with that, so that um, you can participate as much as possible too.
That'd be great to see, especially the authors talk. Great. Uh, the next one, yes, the next one is acceptance of the thousand dollar donation from the PTO. And since this one is to be used for the SMS chorus band music program.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
Thank you. I have a motion. I need a second, please.
A second.
Thank you. I motion a second to accept the thousand dollar uh, donation from the PTO. Please take the vote, Rhonda.
Mike?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
I have the vote.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is the award of bid for the replacement computers. And I guess Matt, you want to explain what happened?
Yes, um, so last month, we um, we did award um, bid for the purchase of replacement computers. However, in the interim, um, we, we did determine that there was a miscommunication with the vendors on the evaluation of the bids. Um, so we had, we had disqualified one of the vendors, HPI. Uh, however, upon further review, they, they are in fact the lowest qualified bidder. So we are recommending that we discard the previous awarded bid to Staples and to award the bid of the replacement um, computers to HPI International in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty cents.
That's it. Um, I will, any discussions regarding this? I'll take a motion to award the replacement computers to HPI International in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Great. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Please take the vote, Rhonda.
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
And Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Great. Okay, uh, the next item is deliberative session dates and for some reason I can't open it.
Well, um, I'll actually, the, the budget development timeline also has deliberative session date. So um, it's, so I'll actually combine that these two items, if you don't mind. Um, but we, we have put forth a proposed timeline for budget development for this coming. Um, well, it'll be for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two um, school budget. Um, we do plan to deliver a proposed budget to the school board by November fourth. Um, at which point we will um, work together to um, to finalize the school board um, proposed operating budget and warrant articles to present to the budget committee, which um, will be delivered on December fourth. Um, I also, I'll also note that the deliberative session is scheduled for February um, first with a um, snow date of February second. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
No? I think that should be fine. Given the question of funding from the town and such, you think that's going to delay anything at this point?
I'm sorry, what will delay?
Um, if, you know, some of the reduction in fundings from the towns based on uh, revenue, you think that might put a uh, wrench in the works on this schedule at all?
Uh, it shouldn't affect this schedule. Um, what, what a decline in revenue may affect is um, is potential support of any proposed budget that we bring forth. So this will be a challenging budget process. Um, you know, that our communities are struggling and we do anticipate that they will continue to struggle. Um, so, so it is incumbent upon us to bring forth a, a, a real, and we always do, but a real um, fiscally responsible budget um, that um, that really aligns with, with the town and the, the community's goals.
Great. Thank you. Any questions at all? Are we okay with that? All right, um, I don't need a motion on that. That's just set. All right. Next is the draft meeting calendar.
Right, so the same on this item. This is a, this is uh, the same calendar that we gave to the joint board a few weeks ago. It has, it lays out uh, the, the dates for each of our board meetings. Um, our uh, policy committee meeting, our joint board, our OC, um, tied in with those deliberative dates. Very similar in structure to this year's calendar with a few adjustments to make those um, deliberatives and other kinds of budget meetings correspond to our regular board meetings. So this is the calendar um, that we will begin to operate off of uh, for our boards for the coming year.
Okay, oh, let's see. The joint board meeting in August, we don't have one?
We, I don't believe we usually do. Um, we don't, um, no, we don't. We, you know, listen, these, these updates and and need for action on various things that may come our way. We will obviously have to add to this, but this is our, this is our look at the traditional um, calendar and.
This is the core of it all. Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have to do anything at all regarding, not at all? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, the next one is uh, budget adjustments.
So Matt, can I just say a word about this before you, you describe the, the details? Um, we, we spent a lot of time, um, in, in the case of your district, these conversations actually go months and months back. But the core is that we've done a lot of work over the last number of months to try to take a look at the needs of our districts, available funds, funds available through the CARES Act. Um, and um, and, and what we need to have in place for students to return. Prior to that, there were conversations that we had going on off of a number of conversations with staff um, and analysis of, of, of some of the budget challenges that we were already facing around special education, supports for students, those kinds of things. And so your principals did a really good job of sort of melding all that together into a coherent thought about some revisions that we believe are necessary in terms of next year's budget. So you're gonna, you're gonna, and in addition to that, you're going to see something on here that's really about our student population change and that is a need for additional ESOL, English as a Little Second Language support. So the only thing that I want to sort of say here is that this entire, um, the, the piece you see about first grade EAs and second grade teachers is predicated on, on a belief, um, I, I could go as far as to say a fact, that um, support for students at those early primary ages yields, yields outcomes and, and reductions in costs associated with, associated with other kinds of supports that are necessary later on. So what we are trying to do is to devote resources to kids in primary grades, to cut down on class size, to provide, provide teachers with supports so, so that we, we can support kids, so that we can give kids what they need at these primary grades. Um, the, the literature on these kinds of approaches uh, is that you cut down on special education referrals, you cut down on the need for paraprofessionals to support kids later on in their school career. Um, I've, I've, I've had that experience in a number, another district. Um, you're, when we've sort of looked at these numbers, your second grade was a glaring omission to a primary, um, to a, to a, to looking at a class size at the primary level. We've attempted to, to solve that problem by keeping class sizes at the level that they're at in K and one. Um, and so there's a lot of really great thought sort of put into this and utilization of monies that are in the budget, monies that are in CARES to, to be able to make these things happen in support of your kids. So um, thank you, Matt, for letting me sort of give that, that sort of introduction. And I'll turn it over to you and Stephanie and others to talk about uh, any of the particulars that you want to note. Thanks.
Yeah, so I'll reiterate Bill's point that um, you know, principals that are really nice job um, in putting together a proposal that um, you know, we worked with, working with the SAU, um, developed this plan. Um, this, this has been a primary topic of discussion. When I say this, I mean personnel. Um, that's, you know, staffing analysis, um, and determining how we um, utilize our human resources um, to the utmost effect within our schools is, is incredibly important. Because as you know, personnel is um, you know, is our largest expense and um, is, is our goal to, to maximize um, those staffing resources that we have. Um, so that's been a discussion, um, you know, well over a year. Um, we've, we've really been working hard to um, to optimize um, staffing. Um, but as we look to this fall, um, and reopening of school under the, this new um, set of circumstances, um, we, it was, it was real important that we examined our budget assumptions and, and take another look at that, those, those staffing um, decisions that were made um, back in the fall. Um, this is particularly important with, with um, you know, with this, this spring's remote instruction. Um, regardless of how the fall looks, whether that's in person, whether it's remote, whether it's some sort of rural enclosures or, or hybrid approach. Um, you know, these are, um, you know, there, there are a, a number of issues that we do need to um, to uh, to meet as far as, you know, or address rather, um, as, as far as getting students up to speed. Um, you know, we, we all know, I mean, we're, we're, we're very proud of the, the remote work that we've, we've, we've done. However, um, you know, there, there's no replacing that face-to-face components. Um, and, and there are certain segments of the population that are more affected um, than others from an equity basis. So um, as Bill mentioned, the, the first um, item that we, we were looking to address is our first grade um, classroom um, educational assistance. Um, so what we're proposing is to um, add three of those EAs um, to the first grade classrooms. Um, this will really provide for a better ratio of staff um, to students um, to, to best support our curriculum. Um, we added two um, EAs back in twenty eighteen, nineteen. This was a way to, you know, this, this isn't just a, a, a knee-jerk reaction. We, we were, or we have been planning to add these supports to our lower grade levels. Um, it just hasn't, you know, it can't be one fell swoop, so we've, we're, we've been transitioning. So back in twenty eighteen, nineteen, um, we added two. Um, so this will, will be the remaining three to support all of our classes, uh, you know, across the board in equal manner. Um, this is similar to the kindergarten model. Um, you know, I, I, I'll even say this could be important at the second grade level at, you know, at some point down the road. Um, so um, these are, but these early grades, um, it's essential to have that added support for that personalized, um, individualized learning while that, while our kids are learning how to, you know, read, um, um, you know, learn um, math skills, et cetera. So um, what we're doing, and I, and I'll say across, as Bill mentioned, across the board, um, you know, we, we, you know, Stephanie and, and Aaron were really creative in how to, how to fund these positions. Um, so in this case, um, we will, we're, we're looking to just, we're going to transfer some educational associates from higher grade levels um, to, to hone in on these um, early um, grade levels um, in, in grade one. Um, in second grade, um, as you know, we have, um, we have four teachers. Um, this is as opposed to um, you know, first, uh, I think, actually kindergarten, first grade. Um, we have, we have five teachers um, with, with similar um, numbers of students. So um, you know, we, we're all aware of the research that indicates that, you know, the smaller ratios of um, teachers to, to students um, really is important. Um, you know, it's particularly in these foundational um, skill development grades. Um, I'm not certain the specific year, but a number of years back, there were five teachers. Um, and that was reduced um, back when, um, that was when kindergarten was implemented. Um, that was a, um, you know, that was a sacrifice that was made in that year. Um, however, we are looking to rectify that, um, because second grade, like I said, is, is another very important grade. Um, and we, we are looking at those ratios and it's all the more important this year, um, coming off um, this remote instructional environment um, to, to support these students. Um, so how we will fund this um, particular teacher, which um, you know, we've budgeted a hundred and eight thousand dollars um, would be through the reduction of um, some identified operating budget accounts. So that includes um, some savings that we've already know we will be recognizing. So that includes longevity. So that includes longevity, you know, our summer program, equipment, some field trip transportation books and speaker accounts. You know, it's always difficult when making these type of decisions because ultimately, it's a determination of what our priorities, where our priorities lie as a school district. And we just, we're just, we just really feel, and we hate to give up funding on any of those accounts either. But ultimately, you know, teachers, we all know teachers make the greatest effect and impact on our students. And we feel that in this environment, it's more important to expend our funds with a second grade teacher rather than some of those other accounts. Our, we will also be utilizing Title II A funds and looking to eliminate an EA position and a vacant transportation coordinator position that we've had difficulty funding. It hasn't been filled the last couple of years anyway. Our English as a Second Language teacher proposal is really a necessity. So we have had an increasing need for ESL students. You know, our number of students has been rising over the number, over the last few years. In 2018, 19, we had 16 students. This, last year, we had 28 students. And we were just unable, a single ESOL teacher is unable to support our current enrollment of ESL students. So this is something that, again, you know, it's, that's, this is, this actually isn't really a choice. We are required to provide ESOL services to our students, similarly to special education services. So we are proposing that we eliminate two EA positions and utilize some of our CARES fund, CARES Act funds, which I think Bill mentioned earlier, but we have officially received. There still needs to be some kinks worked out at the state level and federal level as far as, you know, how that's, how that's determined as far as allocating, but we have the money available currently. And we fully anticipate to have the bulk of that money. This is not the complete entire amount that we're, we anticipate receiving. So finally, we have a proposal to add to our Chromebooks investments, just under $89,000. And this is really an important piece to ensure that all of our students have a one-to-one device available kindergarten through eighth grade. You know, we were able to meet that need this spring, kind of, you know, utilizing iPads and then, you know, kind of an ad hoc basis, but it wasn't, it wasn't ideal. You know, we utilized a lot of paper at the lower grade levels with packets. You know, this is a goal of Seabrook School District is to go one-to-one. It's been something that we've been working on for a number of years. That's in the technology plan. This obviously has expedited that slightly. So we're looking to purchase Chromebooks for our kindergarten through second grade students as well as some of the staff members that were not supplied with devices. So that includes our reading specialists and some of our EAs. So this will, this is a benefit to the school district, whether we're in a remote environment or in person. So we are planning to utilize Title IV funds as well as CARES Act funds. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of these items, or, you know, Stephanie, Aaron, Bill, I mean, they're intimately involved with this. So, but we are, we are recommending approval of these budget adjustments.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank Matt and whoever was on your team for creating this because this is a great memo. It clearly outlines the need and the funding source. A lot of times you'll see, oh, we want to do this, we want to do that, but there's no clear definition as to where the funds are coming from. And this is, this is a great in this case. And also it shows a lot of planning. I mean, that's something that, over the years, because we haven't had the staff to really look into these things, I think it's starting to show more that we are doing a lot more planning and utilizing the resources, I guess, in a better way. And this is a result, but thank you very much.
Well, the credit really goes to Aaron and Stephanie. They did, they put a lot of work into this. There's also, I will note, this is a summary, the plan, the backup plan with all the details is, you know, three or four, well, it's a spreadsheet, but probably three pages long. It's very detailed. So it's, it was, it was a lot of work, but they really came through and did a great job with this, so.
The only other thing I want to add to that, Mike, is that the staff is aware of this, the staff was involved in this. The staff, most of these recommendations, those first two recommendations in particular, came from staff. They were part of discussions with staff. So the, these, and I'll just tell you, based on my experience, these will make a difference. They will make a huge difference for kids. And if it's anything like the places where I've sort of worked in on things like this, it will make a difference for kids and it will save you money in the long run.
Great. All right. Thank you all, Stephanie and Aaron, for doing this. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of planning, a lot of discussions with teachers and such, and this is a great result. All right. I need a motion to accept this. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right. I'll take a motion to accept the budget adjustments as outlined in the 69 memo by Matt Ferrara.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And I need a second, please.
A second.
Okay. Was that Jen? Was it second?
Jessica was the second. Jen, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking the wrong person. All right. No further discussions. Please take a vote. Rhonda?
Mike?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
All right. The next one is summer hiring. Bill?
Yes. So this is the recommendation that we ask you to approve yearly that allows us to, should we have openings, and right now we don't in terms of professional staff, but should we have openings during the summer months, it doesn't require us to wait until till August or, and/or September to take action, hire those. We'll lose people if that's the case. But it allows us to proceed with hiring in July and August and bring those recommendations to the board for ratification at the very next board meeting.
Great. Any?
You?
Sorry. Any discussions? Okay. Rhonda, I guess the motion is to authorize the superintendent to hire staff with contracts during June, July, and August, and to bring the hires to the August or September board meeting for ratification, correct? Someone, please, make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jess.
I'll second.
And Jen is second. No further discussions. Rhonda, please vote.
Mike?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is recognition of retirees. One of the things that, over the years, we've all gone to school, and we've all had teachers that were fabulous, but most of the time, we're not there to recognize them when they're retiring. So in this particular case, it's nice to see a listing of who's who, how many years, what they did and such, and looking back on our education, and we have teachers that had 20, 30, 40 years of education or experience, and we were not there for them. So this is great to honor these people. I like to read them aloud. Patricia Beach, 20 years in the grade six science. Robin Cassasa, 19-plus years as a guidance counselor. Thomas Schwayheimer, 35 years in grades five through eight as physical education. Patricia Valsich, 35 years, grade seven science. And Anna Williams, eight years, director of special services. Other board members? Yes, thank you, thank you. Other board members like to make any comments specifically on who they might know or just talk about them?
I'd just like to say thank you for all the years of service and what they've done for our children. I personally had Ms. Valsich and Mr. S. when I was in school. So it's nice to be able to be here and congratulate them on their retirement. Enjoy.
Great. Again, I go back to my statement, we're not usually experiencing the retirement and being around because either we move out of the area or move on and graduate. So this is a great experience. Thank you.
I just want to mention that at our eighth grade graduation last night, I wish I was keeping track and really counting, but there were a tremendous amount of not only students saying goodbye to Mr. S., but parents who had had him too, and it was pretty, pretty nice to see. It was special moments, having him see two generations say goodbye to him last night.
Right. With some 32 people with 35 years, you almost could have three generations. But, all right. But thank you again, everyone. So next meeting dates. The joint board meeting is on Monday, June 15th at 5:00 PM. The joint board policy committee meeting is Wednesday, June 24th at 4:30. And our next Seabrook School Board meeting is Tuesday, August 11th.
And everything's gonna be fine by then, so.
Okay. I like that. We'll all be back together in the same room with masks on, right? Okay. Let's see.
We are not in need of non-public.
Yeah, I didn't think so. We're doing that. I guess we come to a close, then? Would anyone like to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
That's second. All right.
I'll second.
I guess just a thumbs up and enjoy your time off, and we'll see you in August, right?
Oh, you'll see us at the joint board.
Monday. We'll see you Monday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I'll see you Thursday. Right.
Right.
You all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, everyone. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.